Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Can we have roll call, Mrs. Fire?
Um, Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Jones? Ms. Page?
Here.
Ms. Plinter?
Here.
Madam Chair, the court certifies the presence of a court.
Thank you. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's standings, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Hornet, are there any attestants to the agenda, sir?
Uh, yes, ma'am. In the superintendent's report recommendations, Mr. Barry is out this evening. His daughter had a volleyball game, playoff volleyball game, uh, that he just found out on last week. And so if it'd be okay with you, we will bring forward the SBR report at the next work session for the board's information.
Okay, right. During that, can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented, please?
Yes, I make a motion. We approve the agenda with deleting the item the superintendent spoke about.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. So at this time, I will drop down to superintendent's and reports and turn it over to you, Dr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board appreciate your flexibility, as does Mr. Barry. We're going to start this evening. I'm going to bring Mr. Honaker forward. Under reports and recommendations, letters A, B, and C will all fall under Mr. Honaker, so he will be able to explain those to you. So Gary, take it away.
Items A and B sort of go together. This was approved in August as a budget carryover. But the county has recommended that we separate those out into two items. The insurance, the insurance cost and disability insurance separate from the carryover. So, um, does anybody have any questions about any one of those items?
What would be the reason of separating it?
Um, I think it was just that the insurance cost was not a normal carryover item like the others were traditional carryover items, so they asked us to do a supplemental appropriation.
Great. And well, if nobody has any questions, someone entertain the idea of making a motion to go ahead and accept this.
I move to accept the presentation of this year 2023 supplemental appropriations, health and disability insurance as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay.
Item C is again another supplemental appropriation. Uh, this is all federal funds.
Yeah, the motion was for A.
Oh, I'm sorry, for A. Well, that was out. So the carryover items, I sort of presented those together, but the carryover items, they're asking for a carryover budget from that by 22 for the items that's listed.
Are there any questions of Mr. Honaker? Are, if there are none, then entertain a motion to accept these as well.
Make a motion that we approve the carryover funds as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, now I want to see. C is another supplemental appropriation. Again, this is all federal funds. As you can see, for operating food service and Head Start, again, there's an explanation attached. Does anybody have any questions about these items?
Now, does this just mean we're getting extra funds and we're adjusting our budget, or?
Well, these, the funds, we do an estimate each year of what we're expected to get in these funds. And then when the actual money comes in, or if we have money that we didn't spend up to September, we use those money, those funds for more and more. So that's what all these are.
So this?
Now, with the exception, I say that, with the exception, the food service and Head Start, those are both new ones. Those are new grants. The other is just typical grants that we have.
And the food service was to help offset high, higher costs with inflation and supply chain issues and those type of things.
Is everyone comfortable with accepting this as presented?
I'll make a motion. We approve the supplemental funds here for, as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honaker. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. We will move on to letter D. And, uh, Mr. Hill will come forward. Our technology director talked about a declaration of surplus requests that we have. So Greg, take it away.
Good evening. So these are more items that we have, that we have replaced in the course of the technology being outdated. Also, they're designed, they're all out of warranty. So to continue to use these, we don't need to. We replace them with newer items that are all under warranty. And again, we hope we get a return on these as well as we go out to get buyback for them for, especially the two applicant units. On the second part, we already have five or four of those, and that money will be turned back into purchasing that debt's production here.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Hill? Is everyone comfortable with this? Can we go ahead and approve this as well?
I move to declare the devices as surplus property for disposals presented.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Hill. We will move on to letter E. And Doctors Honaker and Anderson will come forward. And they have information as far as the gifted advisory committee members.
Good evening. Tonight, representing our proposed committee for gifted advisory for this year, the gifted advisory will meet three times per year, provide input on activities to engage parents, ways that we can enhance their services, and feedback on our gift.
I, I, I never seen anybody from high school on this.
The gifted parent advisory is for grades K through eight. Um, those are the areas, the grades that we actually identify students in. Once they get to high school, we have the Blue Returnful Governor's School. We have parent nights for that. We have different ways of communicating with those parents, college nights for doing all the things like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Aye. If there are no objections, can I entertain a motion to accept these?
I move to approve the 2022-23 gifted advisory membership as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. And now we'll come down to our, our largest presentation for the evening. And, uh, Doctors Anderson and Honaker, as well as Mrs. and Ms. Ailer, have spent quite a bit of time preparing a report on the status of school accreditation in Orange County public schools based on last year's data. So ladies, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, person, members of the board, Dr. Hornet. We come tonight to talk to you about our accreditation for the 2022-23 school year. This is based on the 2021-22 results. And we're going to go through each slide and explain the different areas and where we fall on those standards.
State accreditation for each school is based on multiple measures. The first of those is student achievement, and student achievement is measured by student performance on the SOL tests in reading, math, and science. And those are in grades three through five and into course, I'm sorry, three through eight, and into course at high school. Um, state considers the overall performance in all of those areas and subgroup performance in both reading and math. The second component of accreditation is, well, actually, the second and third are both parts of student engagement. So the second is attendance, and that's measured by each school's chronic absenteeism rate. Although this requirement is typically a part of each year's accreditation, attendance was waived for the current year's accreditation. Um, we've included that information in tonight's report because attendance, of course, is essential to student learning. And the third component, and this is at the high school level for student engagement, is a high school's on-time graduation rate and dropout rate. Those are considered in accreditation rating as well.
We're happy to report that all of our schools are accredited according to the requirements for this school year set forth by the Virginia Department of Education. And in addition to the overall accreditation status, the state provides ratings relative to performance in each of the quality indicators that Dr. Honaker is considering.
So the accreditation standards measure performance on multiple school quality indicators that include student achievement on reading, math, and science tests, chronic absenteeism, and for high school, the graduation and dropout rates. The academic indicators look at the overall proficiency of all students and the achievement gaps among student subgroups. The proficiency levels for each area are listed here. Additionally, the chronic absenteeism indicator requires that no more than 15% of a school's student population is chronically absent. And that means if a student misses more than 18 or more days, they are considered a chronic absentee.
Um, in each of those areas that Renee just mentioned, the state provides each school a rating or a level for each component, and each of those can be rated either Level One, Level Two, or Level Three. A Level One means that the school's performance in that area is at or above the benchmark, or that the school has made sufficient improvement from a Level Two. A Level Two rating is near the benchmark or satisfactory improvement from a previous Level Three rating. And a Level Three rating means that the school's performance is below the benchmark, or that the school's performance in that indicator has been at a Level Two for more than four consecutive years, four or more consecutive years. Um, and the quality indicator, the way those are rated, can be based solely on the school's performance of that current year, or on a three-year average, whichever is higher. For this current year, that would mean the school years of 2017, 18, 18, 19, and last year, 21, 22. Okay, so first, we're going to take a look at the elementary school's performance, and we're going to start with academic achievement. Um, as a reminder, academic achievement is based on student performance in grades three through five in reading, math, and science. Taking a look at those, you'll see at Level One, the schools that are listed means that those schools met or exceeded the state benchmark. Um, you will notice that Lucas Grove Primary does not have SOL tests, but their accreditation and academic achievement is linked to Lucas Grove Elementary. And the same for Unionville and Lightfoot Elementary. Um, Unionville and Lightfoot Elementary are Level One, and all of their indicators, with the exception of two gap groups in English. And those two, two groups that did not meet the benchmark are black students and students with disabilities. Next, we're going to take a look at student engagement, which again is based on chronic absenteeism. Um, looking at this slide, you'll see that Lucas Grove Elementary earned Level One in attendance, and the other elementary schools are at Level Two for their engagement for due attendance. And now Renee will provide a review of the secondary schools.
Secondary school's academic achievement is based on student performance on grades six through eight math, English, and science SOL tests, as well as high school and of course assessments. All secondary schools achieved an overall Level One in academic achievement, meaning that student performance on the SOL test met or exceeded the state benchmark. However, if you look at the bar for Level Two, you will see that based on the achievement gap of students with disabilities and English language learners, both middle schools and the high schools were at Level Two in those areas. The high school had their gap in English, and the two middle schools were in both English and math for those two subgroups. But overall, the other stores grew up. And then next, we have the engagement. Secondary school's engagement indicators again are measured by chronic absenteeism for all three of these schools, and then by graduation and dropout rates for the high school. So OCHS achieved a Level One for its graduation and dropout rates, and attendance for the high school is an area of concern as they scored below the benchmark and earned a Level Three. Both middle schools earned a Level Two for chronic absenteeism.
So as we reviewed the accreditation detail report for all of the schools, we did notice several things across K-12. First, attendance was an area of concern across the school division, and the chronic absenteeism rates were far too high. Much of this can be attributed, though, to requirements related to COVID contact tracing and quarantine. When considering academic achievement, we noticed the performance of some subgroups was below the state benchmark in reading and math. And additionally, fifth grade science was a concern across the division with an overall pass rate that was below the state benchmark.
So what we've shown you this evening is the accreditation pass rates. And remember, these are individual school pass rates, but they do include growth on those numbers. So we thought it was also important to show you our assessment pass rates, the raw scores for each of our four content areas overall for the division. So again, accreditation rates are based on a pass rate plus growth, so the student shows growth from one test to another. But regular assessment pass rates are raw scores without growth. So as you can see by the bar graph here, in the four content areas, math, we are below the state average. The orange bar shows our division, and the blue bar shows the state. In English, we are slightly below again. Uh, we are even with the state in science, and one point below the state in history.
Based on the analysis of student performance, um, we are, we know there are numerous areas that require improvement. Our goal is that all schools meet or exceed the benchmarks that are set forth by the state, and our division is engaged in a continuous improvement model to meet those requirements. Our schools have been working hard to develop plans to improve in the areas on which accreditation is based. In order to do so, our principals have engaged with their leadership teams, with one another's team, and the central office staff to analyze their school data and determine their areas of focus, as well as their needs. And each school has developed a continuous improvement plan, beginning with rigorous goals to meet the state requirements, and every year ago. And now Ms. Ailer, no, actually, Renee is going to talk about strategies.
So all schools are focusing on professional learning communities, or PLCs. You'll probably hear PLC a lot as we go through this school year. Um, and that means professional learning community. This is where teachers work together to analyze data, share resources, and adapt plans to meet individual student needs, and to address these areas of concern that we have outlined here. Our curriculum coordinators are auditing all of our pacing guides to ensure the rigor matches the level of the standard, and that all assessments are measuring that level of rigor. Triclean specialists are working with the PLCs in each school to assist with strategies for interventions. We have also revised our walkthrough tool, which is what principals use when they go in and observe teachers, to measure research-based instructional practices, and to help principals monitor, monitor rigorous and relevant classroom instruction. We also have requested that each school have a professional development plan, that where they are able then to meet their teachers' needs within their own schools. And we have an increased focus on new teacher support this year with someone at central office who's working with the school-based mentors to make sure that we are really supporting our new teachers in, in a wide variety of areas. We're also trying to increase parent engagement through increased communication efforts, both from the school and division levels.
We're also obviously making attendance a priority, and so we've worked with each of the schools. They developed as part of their school improvement plan, strategies for addressing attendance. Um, and their strategies are unique to each building. Each community is a little bit different, and when they delved into the data, they were able to see maybe some of the particulars in their community and their building that needed some additional attention. We're also working closely with school counselors and our school social workers to make sure that our families and our students have the supports and services that they need as well to be sure to attend school and, and be successful each day. As far as monitoring progress, that's something that goes on every day. Um, we have date regular data meetings in the buildings, data meetings as a central office, and we're regularly revising and reviewing their school improvement plans.
So in closing, tonight's presentation has given you a broad overview of state accreditation, how it is determined, overall, how each of our schools is performing, and the plan for addressing those areas identified for growth and improvement. We have attached two links here to the detailed accreditation report, as well as to the school quality profile, so that you can get a deeper dive into all the individual schools and their areas of need and their areas of success. So at this time, we welcome any questions.
So, this is a lot of information. I know you guys are doing the best that you can with everything and with the state unraveling its standards and basically the report card of how the state's doing. Um, I know they're talking about raising the bar in the spring. Is there going to be another measurement that you guys are going to be doing so we can review to try to prepare better for those higher standards? Um, I don't know if it's like the next six months or so, is there going to be a report out, or what's your plan?
Um, yes, we do have mid-year assessments. So we have some baseline assessments from the hall, including the growth assessments that are administered from the state level. And then, of course, we have other assessments that we use. We use MAP, which is measures of that kind of progress in both reading and math. Those are both administered, again, mid-year, so we'll have more data there that will help indicate how our students are progressing toward meeting standards at the end of the year.
Okay. Um, and then another question I came up with, I saw there was a 6% dropout rate, but do we know the reason of the 12% not graduated rate? What are the other reasons that would be listed? If that was on slide?
And we have Evan here, who can maybe help with some of the answers to the various specific data points involved.
On slide four, um, the quality indicators, the graduation rate was 88%, um, so that would be about 12% that didn't graduate.
That's the requirement. So that's the, that's the benchmark. That's not the, um, what we earned. So that's, you have to have an 88% graduation rate. That's the benchmark for the state. And then the dropout rate has to be less than 6%. So that's.
You're not saying that's our school?
No. Our graduation rate, let me, I've got it right here. Evan, correct me if I'm reading the wrong one, but for the cohort of 2022, our graduation was at 88.36. So we did, we're at Level One for all of these. And our dropout rate was a Level Two for this year, 7.65, but they use it, they take what's higher, either this year or the three-year average, whichever one's higher. And our three-year average was 5.08, so it is less than 6%. So that's what our individual scores are.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
I, I, I do have one comment, and that's attendance. Doesn't matter how good you train your teachers, if the student isn't in the classroom, that it's, it's a problem. So I know you said each principal has worked out something about how they're going to address attendance, but to be honest with you, as a school board member, I'd like, I'd like to hear a little more information about that.
So at each school, one, we have social workers that are assigned. They each have three schools. So the social worker is working with the school counselors and the administration in each building. And so they have identified, what are some strategies within our building that we can have students attend more regularly? Again, a lot of the absenteeism was due to COVID contact tracing and quarantine requirements that were in place that we had to follow. But they put lots of different things in place. It might be students who show up on the absentee report, they get a phone call home, a personal phone call from a staff member, asking, you know, we're checking in to make sure everything's okay. Is there something we can do to help? Is your child ill? You know, just to, to check in with the family. Um, we do home visits. They've done some incentive and some reward programs within the buildings to incentivize kids coming to school. And obviously, you know, all the hard work that our teachers have done in the classroom and things being a little bit more back to normal, the engagement.
I understand COVID caused a lot of problems, but I mean, I mean, our graduation rate has been higher than this in the past. Uh, getting the students back into, that it's a five-day-a-week thing, may take some training, but I think we need to concentrate on that.
Absolutely.
Because if they're not in the school, in other words, I'm talking as a teacher. If I've got 20% of my class not here, then what do I do the next time I meet with the students? Am I supposed to go back and teach those 20 over again and not go forward? Uh, it, it's very frustrating to the teacher. So I, I'm saying, I'm just saying to the administration, getting the student in the classroom is, is essential if you really want to push on learning.
Absolutely. And Mr. Hopkins, I would tell you that every single administrator wholeheartedly agrees. We'd love to have every student in every building every day and be able to say we have 100% attendance every day. And so that's why we're doing a lot of the deep dives into why kids aren't, or why a student might not be. Um, you know, and sometimes there are illnesses or other family situations that get in the way, and we have some, you know, supports in place that we can work through those with families as well.
Because there are plans to, you know, set the bar higher for ourselves. So 18 days of missing school is a lot.
A lot.
Days missing school. So if we're, if our goal is at 18 days, I mean, we're going to hit that, I'm sure, but we should be trying to exceed that, you know, 10 days, and then we have a performance improvement plan or something like that, so we can.
Which we do.
We're talking about that.
Yeah, we, we do have this.
Right. 18 is kind of the threshold of, here's the, here's the bar. We don't want to ever hear pass. But there are things in place and procedures through the Code of Virginia that we have to follow as far as when a student misses three days, when they miss five days, when they miss seven days. We have attendance plans that we work with families to put into place. Um, we also have student success plans where we sit down and if it is an academic issue, what are the other supports that we can put in place to help a student? Like I said, our goal is to actually have them hear 100% of the days and not to have any absenteeism.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. That's all for this evening for superintendent 's reports recommendations.
And next is BSBA legislative priorities. And Jim is our delegate, and Ms. Chelsea's our backup delegate for BSBA. Uh, Jim, did you want to go through these?
Yes, ma'am.
Especially since I don't have a voice.
Let me talk a little, little about Virginia School Board Association. It's a non-stock, non-stock corporation in Virginia. And one of the rules, if you are one of those kind of organizations, is once a year, you're required by law to have a membership meeting, and happens to be the Virginia School Board Association does it in November, and it's called a delegate, delegate assembly. Now, Virginia School Board only has, it's by school divisions, and we have about 130. So they basically have 130 members. And so I represent this Orange County School Board. So when I go to this delegate assembly, I'm not gloating what Mr. Hopkins wants. I'm gloating what this Orange County School Board does. So, uh, they're getting ready to have the delegate assembly. On the first page here, I, I didn't put it in the slide, but it basically shows you what's going to happen on, uh, November 10, at 12 o'clock. Uh, during COVID, they started doing these meetings virtually, and they're going to continue it this year, probably not because, in my opinion, not because of COVID. It doesn't have anything to do. have anything to do, but the organization wants to control this meeting. They don't have tight controls on this meeting, because actually, say I'm a representative, if I can get the floor and put up a hand, I can start to make motions. And if I can get seconds, a lot of things can happen. So they control this meeting very tightly. And that's what you see as the first step here, is adopt the rules and procedures. They spend about a half hour talking about the rules and procedures, and then probably another 15 minutes talking about the parliamentarian giving you a lecture about Robert's rules. And then they have lots of reports. The nice things about all these reports is there's really no time to make motions or anything, it's just one report after another. But finally, when you get down to the number nine, 10, and 11, there actually comes something where they'll actually ask me to vote on something. And these are legislative positions that have already existed, but they're just edited, 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 edited. They're, they're edited now. They're being edited, how's that? So all, what we have in front of you, they numbered them legislative position one, legislative position two. So all we're discussing, or all they're going to ask me to vote on, they're not going to ask me to vote on the legislative position as a whole. They're just asking me, can we add these words? Can we take these words out? It's just very much like we do when we adjust the policy. I don't see anything controversial here. So I'm just going to skip through these unless you want to talk about them individually. Actually, that's what will happen at the delegate assembly. They'll present all these at one time, and then they'll ask, is anybody want to withhold maybe position number five? And they'll pull that out. And maybe somebody wants to talk about position six, they'll pull that out, then they'll vote all the others in, and then they'll come back and do the five and six. But the way the rules are tight, it's going to be very difficult to say, I want to add this word here. If you're going to do something like that, you have to, the rules say you have to present that before the meeting and so forth. So the, basically, I would say, from my experience working with this organization at this meeting, you might have a chance to stop one by saying, I object to it. They'll give you the floor, and you can talk about it. If you convince enough of the other divisions that it's worth your position, they will vote it down. But I think essentially, you really, by practical terms, you either vote them up or down. Chances of saying, I want to substitute this word for that word, the procedure to go through that is, is so complicated that it really wouldn't work. Sometimes these are controversial, but I didn't see any wording changes here that I thought were controversial at all. I did want to jump to page 75, because actually, at the bottom of page 75, we actually have a brand-new position. VSBA supports additional state funding and other resources to address chronic shortages of school buses, including address unnecessary barriers to entering the school bus driver and so forth. So that one is completely new. I personally don't have anything against it. Then, on page 76, we have a position that's being deleted. Non-public school students participating in Virginia High School League activities. They're just taking that out and saying, they're not going to take a position on it at all, let individual schools do whatever they want. Of course, this has been a hot topic in the General Assembly for about the last four or five years. The problem is, the Virginia High School League is again, another non-stock, stock corporation, and it's not part of the public schools, it's not a public body. So the General Assembly can't really tell it what to do. They can pass all the rules they want in the General Assembly, but they, you can't tell a private organization what they can and can't do. So it's been a hot political, uh, issue for a long time. So the Virginia School Board is just saying, we're not going to take a position on it. That's what I would say that is. And finally, the last one is a vital change. That's on page 78. And this is because National School Board Association, we no longer belong to that organization. So you needed to take something about them out of the, out of, out of the bylaws, because we don't belong to that organization anymore. So that's why that's being crossed out. Was that exhaledation? Is there any questions?
I have a couple and a couple comments. I don't know if we're voting on anything tonight. However, with the virtual option, I know.
What page are you talking about?
Well, this is just how you were talking about how the meeting is set up. So the virtual option of having the meeting, so it's a tightly controlled thing. If I remember you certainly correctly, it's required to have the ability for every member to be able to speak at one time. So I don't know how they would necessarily, and this might not be a question for you.
Well, I mean, that was just a personal opinion of myself, of why they would stay in virtual. But I mean, you've been in group meetings. I mean, they can turn your microphone off and basically just shut you down. If I'm in the meeting, I can, I can raise my hand and be recognized. I know you can do it virtually, but.
Well, I think what they've done in the past was, they had them in the room, everyone had a card, and you could raise your card and vote on the positions or deflect from that. And so I'm assuming with virtual, you can raise your hand or flag it.
I mean, they're going to recognize, they're not going to do anything that, that breaks the rule. They're definitely not going to break the rules. They make the rules tight, and they make sure everybody's safe. But I, I'm just telling you that if I'm sitting in a room with 130 people, they can see my face, and when I can't get the floor to speak, I know I can be more effective talking and looking straight at them, seeing the reactions, seeing whether I'm getting smiles or not, rather than sitting in my home, not being able to see anybody trying to talk to 130 people now.
And then.
So you understand.
Yeah, I understand everything. Second, I don't understand how they can adopt rules and say you have to submit things before our meeting, during the meeting, which precludes the ability to submit changes prior to the meeting.
Right. They just have, they have all these rules, and you can do it. I mean, first is, I mean, we can submit positions ourselves, but if you want to, I, we can't submit positions now. If, if you want to do it way back in June or May or June, they put out a flyer and say, you want to, they're asking us as a school board, do we want to make a position? We could write up a whole position and send it in. Now, it has to pass through their board of directors, but then it could be. So if you wanted the Virginia School Board to take an association, or you wanted them to change, these are just a few of theirs. In that delegate assembly, they have all kinds of positions. If you wanted to change one of those, we should start on that in May and June, because first is, our board's going to have to come together and say, in other words, I can't just submit something, I have to have this board approve and then submit it. So it's, it's a long process, but it, it can be done. So if you're looking through Virginia School Board Association positions. Now, what are these positions important about? Well, Virginia School Board Association hires several lobbyists that deal with education at the General Assembly all the time. Matter of fact, it's almost a year-round operation, so.
And these are the positions that they lobby?
These are the positions that they're supposed to hold when they go talk to the legislature.
Yeah, that kind of answers my next question as to why almost every single one of them was proposed by Fairfax County. That's interesting.
It's, it's not always that way, but I would say Fairfax County has the resources. They have two or three lawyers on, not, not just one lawyer, but they have a whole stack of lawyers, and they just have more resources so they can step through those, these things.
So that being said, I don't have any comment on the first position. I don't know if anyone else has any.
Well, I think I had, I had a couple. I wasn't sure what it actually meant. It's, it's basically, we're, we're voting on allowing them to go to, to present their positions on these specific items that are listed here. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, like position one, we're only voting on the wording changes. We're not voting on the position itself.
This is their position, and anything that's scratched out is what they're going to change, anything underlined by what they're.
These, these are the positions that is being voted on by the school boards, who will next year be printed in the books that we get that says VSBA legislative positions. And these were the ones that Stacy and JT will go to DC and advocate for.
In other words, what I'm trying to say is like legislative position number one, if you don't like what they're saying, we can vote no, but it's not going to get rid of the position. All it's going to do is say, you can't add those words, and you can't take those words out.
The position's already there.
Yes. So we're, it's just the rewording of a position. Now, you can have new positions, and ones can disappear. We had an example of that.
So for legislative position number two, I am against this entirely. We, this is just my personal opinion, we have been talking about, you know, time away from the classroom, instructional limitations, and this wording in here, in my opinion, makes it seem like they're going to advocate for more frequent SOL assessments. And I don't think we need more testing. That's going to decrease class time, it's going to decrease wording. So I would not want that wording to be changed, that's underlined.
In other words, you're talking, you're talking about just the end of the line.
Just the underlined, yes.
So 1.2?
1.3, where it says, including.
Page 67.
Page 67. Including funding for test coordinator positions to help with implementation and administration of expanded and more frequent SOL assessments. I, I don't think our students need more frequent SOL assessments. I think that they need more time in classrooms, they need more time wording. So this is going to hurt both, you know, the teachers, schools, and especially the students.
Yeah, it, it does seem sort of funny, because we're just going through a period in the last four or five years where they've eliminated SOL assessments.
Yeah, and so I, that, that's just my personal opinion. I would not want us voting in favor of changing that wording, because I think that's going to be doing a disservice to the entire state if VSB is lobbying for more frequent SOL.
Okay, you, let's help me here. It, what it seems to me is they are lobbying for more funding for these positions, correct? With increased testing?
So it's including funding for test coordinator positions to help with implementation and administration of expanded and more frequent SOL assessments. So it's all three of those, more funding, implementation of administration expansion, and more frequent SOL assessments. So striking the more frequent SOL assessments, you know, I'm all for more funding. I think that, that anybody would not disagree with that, but more frequent SOL assessments, I just can't believe it.
Well, I think, I think the issue here, the VSBA and a lot of school divisions support the use of different types of assessment, and they mentioned that on page 68, where they reiterate their support for other types of assessments. I think what the issue is, until a change, how I read is, until a change is actually made at the state level to what state testing requirements are, the VSBA is going to argue on our behalf that we should be funded in order to actually implement this mandate from the state. Until that mandate changes, we're, we're still playing by the rules of those game, that game that's been established. And so if that's how I read this, I don't know, Jim, if that's what you feel as well. It, it almost seems to me if it's, they almost word is, is if, if this, if the rules of the game are going to continue in this manner, we need to make sure the schools have the funding and to actually carry out the testing that is being required.
Yeah, I, I give my personal line, looking at these over time, a lot of these are, are always asking for more funding for something.
And so I, again, I agree with, with Chelsea. The, the first, the first part of that sentence is good, with the expanded and more frequent SOL assessments. Because if we're going to be increasing, raising the bar for what our standards have to be, and we're increasing SOL testing, how are we going to have time to teach the kids the new standards if we're involved in increasing SOLs? So again, because part of that sentence is probably good, is the latter part is.
Well, I think.
I think they're, what they're saying, if there's going to be, because at some point, we don't determine what the state's going to come out with more testing, and, and when they're going to give us those, that test limits. What VSBA is, is, is advocating for is minding, funding if you're going to make those more mandates into policy.
Right, which I think the first part of the sentence covers that.
So I don't think VSBA is asking for more testing, they're just asking for more globalization on the funding for any of those additional agendas.
And maybe we change the word and to.
My vote would be, if I was able to vote just by myself, would be no, unless we are able to strike and more frequent.
Well, I, just from my experience of doing this in the past, I could make the point that we don't think you should have more frequent SOL assessments. Now, I don't know if I, if I can get others to agree with me, but I think the ease, I, I don't think it's going to be possible to change words. So I think we just upgrade down, and I have no problems doing that.
Moving to legislative position number four on page 69.
And let's, let's decide, two, you want me to oppose it?
Are, are we holding a vote tonight, or?
We need to vote, we just need to, yeah. I, I think there's a consensus to strike that wording, if at all possible.
Okay, that's good. Okay, next.
So on page 69, under legislative position number four, the underlying reads, the VSBA supports state assistance and facilitation for school divisions, moving their fleet from diesel-powered buses to electric buses. And my comments here were, no, schools should determine the type of bus only, we're not California. So I know as of right now, there's discussions of our, our vehicles having to be transferred into electric vehicles based on laws that are tied to California. And I don't think that our infrastructure to begin with will even support that. But it should be up to the school system, the school division, to determine what buses fit their school system. Limiting that, I could foresee, you know, extra funding being given to schools who are going to electric buses and other schools missing out because they don't have the ability to transition into electric buses.
Well, we're ready to rest too, and we can strengthen somewhere, because we are spread out in large districts.
Well, I believe when it comes to buses, we're not, we don't get any state money for buses. Well, I believe when it comes to buses, we, we're not, we don't get any state money for buses. So, um, I would look at it, if, if any assistance comes from the state, that's just, uh, it'd be help to us. I mean, I, I don't think there's any mandate here that the state's going to tell you you have to have. How could they do that? Well, I guess they could do anything, but.
Well, there is multiple lobbying agencies, and I'm looking at this with a bigger picture as well. You know, you've got the V SBA, I'm sure there's other kinds of lobbyists out there that are going to be pushing for these electronic vehicles. And the more pressure that we add to our representatives to give us funding for electric buses, it's going to push that transition. So I don't think that the V SBA should, you know, be incentivizing one way or another. The, the V SBA does not control what school boards do. The, the law does not give that ability to the V SBA. So I think if they are having that discussion and saying, oh, we're going to facilitate, um, more funds for school divisions to move from diesel buses to electronic buses, um, I just, I don't think that that's something that's.
You mean the state is going to give us money to do something you wouldn't want to take it?
No.
Not would it come still.
Not if it doesn't make sense.
Well, if nobody's forcing you to take it.
But the problem is it comes down to if they force us.
They can't force you.
The government can force you.
Well, I'm, I, I mean, no, especially in buses, because guess what? Our school system doesn't even have to buy transportation. It's not in the state code.
Well, and you remember Fairfax has presented this, pushing for money for buses. So that doesn't mean when it goes too delicate for them to vote on this, that this even is going to pass. So, I mean, right now it's put in, proposed by Fairfax, you know, it says this, but that doesn't necessarily mean when they vote in November that this is going to pass.
Right, but if you've got a smaller school that has no ability to have these transformers or whatever they need to.
So, and say, Fairfax City may be alone there, say we want electric buses. But then you've got Wise County, Smith County, all these counties to the south of us who are not in those big, just like us, who are not in those big metropolitan areas saying, no, we don't want, we don't want electric buses. So it ain't going to pass. You see what I'm saying?
But if, if our schools are getting funding for busing, it would be beneficial if it was across the board and not just for incentivizing.
But I think you cross, you putting that bridge before the horse, I mean horse before the car, before we get there.
That's why we're here, we want to make sure that things don't, you know, unravel down the road, you know.
You mean, you mean if somebody just offered us electric bus, we're going to say no?
I would say no because we, we don't need it.
I, I would take it and sell it. I mean, if somebody offers me a free bus, I'm going to take it.
Okay, I, let's move ahead.
Okay.
Let's move ahead.
Well, okay, I'm.
I think we should, well, I think we should come to a consensus at least.
Right.
If we're going line by line.
No, I, I, I'm going to leave that one in. I'm not going to go to take it out.
Uh.
That would be a two-two vote.
And I would, because I'm like, Jim, they gonna give me a free bus, I'm taking it. We can use it in the town hall and it might not be canceled.
Okay, let's move on.
Yeah, it's a, it's a free bus.
We table that until Mr. Jones joins us, or we table this until Mr. Jones joins us, which is up there.
Well, I think we're not voting technically, I mean, we're not coming to a final conclusion until the seventh anyway. We can go through individuals and figure out what we need to, what we can agree on. And then if we can go on to dig deeper, we need to put the others.
Okay, so our next meeting, we're at the boarding stock up. Is that, okay. Okay. Um, so for legislative position number five on page seventy, the underlying reads, including specific incentives for energy-efficient construction and renovation to reduce the lifetime operating cost of school facilities. Um, my position is the same as with the electric buses. I think that if schools are going to be getting funding, it should be up to the schools to determine how they're going to spend those resources and not necessarily only incentivize, you know, Fairfax County Public Schools or other huger districts that have the ability to, um, transition into certain cost-efficient, energy-efficient construction. So I, I again have an issue with adding that wording, just because if we're going to get funding, I think it should be fair across the board and not just an incentive, oh, here's your carrot, let me make you make your changes based on the money we're going to give you. I mean, regardless, they're going to be requesting construction funds and financing. I don't think it's necessary that we have that wording to include specific incentives for energy-efficient construction. I don't think that, that is needed. If schools want to have that, they can, they can use their funds for that, but I don't think that there should be extra incentives, um, just based on the type of materials that students are, that schools are able to, um, purchase.
Yeah, I.
Well, my understanding is a lot of the energy efficient stuff, um, like the solar panels and things like that, typically you can get a grant to do those kinds of things.
I can't hear you.
You can get a grant to do those things anyway, through the state, necessarily, not through legislation for that particular position. So solar panels, things of that nature. You can go directly to the state to get funding for that. You wouldn't have to go through the, the SBA to get legislation placed for that.
Essentially, I mean, I was on the board when we built the Locust Grove Middle School. And of course, we're just doing a four or five million dollar, uh, addition over at, uh, Burt and Barber. But I mean, there's no, there's no state money in, in that. That's, this is all local money. So all this is doing is, is more or less, and the Southwest school districts, uh, have joined together and that's one of their biggest complaints, is they don't have the money to build the schools. And they've been talking to the General Assembly about some way to, that the state will provide them money. And I, I think the state is sort of interested in doing that, uh.
But you also said that we're only changing the underlining, and so that's not going to change. There's still going to be lobbying for funds for construction and financing. They're still going to be going to the government and asking, hey, we need these funds. I don't think they need to say, hey, we need these funds, but we also like these incentives to urge these schools to purchase these certain materials. I don't think that that is necessary for them to lobby on our behalf.
Well, I have a question. If, if this is something that's already pre-done from last year, other than the underlining or the underlying wording, they obviously have not lobbied for us to get funding for building schools, period.
Well, yes, they do. Uh, just because they lobby doesn't mean they get it passed, but they certainly do. And there's bills that come into General Assembly every year, because there's, uh, delegates that live in Southwest Virginia that put in bills to try to get money for school funding. Uh, I, there's a consortium, actually, I think we belong to it at one time, uh, because we're one of the lar, we're one of the larger of the Southwest school districts, but our assistants, our former superintendent was in charge of that, or was president for one year. But, uh, I guess maybe I'm, I'm getting off the subject.
So, I mean, my concerns are pretty much the same for number four and number five. I don't think schools need extra incentives. I think that, yes, we need the funds, we need to expand, obviously, the population is growing. If people are coming into the Commonwealth, they're going to continue to come into the Commonwealth. So it's going to be a continued request, um, I'm sure from the V SBA, but we don't need them to specifically mention, we want extra funding on these certain things. We need funds, we need them dispersed fairly across the board, not just, you know.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, but, um, I, I just interpret this a little different. I mean, when we went to build the Locust Grove Middle School and we hired, uh, Mosley Architects to build the school, there's, uh, there's a whole national standard called LEEDs. It has to do with how energy efficient your school's going to be and, uh, they try to make the school as efficient as possible. So this is the kind of stuff that it's talking about here. I mean, I.
And if they're lobbying for this, the bill does go in front of the General Assembly.
No, no, I'm, I'm just talking about Orange County. We had to talk the supervisors into spending fifty million dollars to build a school. And they talked, that helped sell them that it was worth doing to talk about energy savings. We're going to build a school as energy savings as possible. And we wanted to meet these LEED standards. That is part of what told the supervisors here that spend fifty million dollars.
Right, and then down the line, if, if they include specific incentives for energy-efficient construction, if there's incentives, I'm sure down the line, we're also going to be having, um, penalties if our schools are not, you know, energy efficient, up-to-date newest technology.
I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I mean, I'm just telling you as a school board member, uh, I wish I could say we were going to build a high school in Eastern End. But I can tell you, if we were going to build a high school in Eastern End, we'd be talking about building the most efficient building that is possible to build. Because that's.
And I understand that.
The public will get in, the public will approve that. If you, they say, why, why do you have to spend eighty million dollars for a school? Can't you save some money? And the basic answer is you probably can't save some money, but you can, uh, make them accept it if you say this is going to be an energy efficient school.
Right, and that's locally, but if we have the government saying, here's ten million dollars. But if you have this energy efficient newest technology thing that, you know, hasn't been studied or well thought out or anything like that, here's an extra two million dollars, whereas everybody could have just had the eleven million dollars. And these are just numbers off the top of my head, but everybody can have the eleven million dollars to spend however they like.
You're not following, you're talking about somebody in the state who's going to be giving us money to build a school.
That's what they're, that's what they're lobbying for. They're lobbying for financing and funds for school facility construction. And so what they're talking about, I'm, I'm fine with them lobbying for that. I'm not fine with them lobbying for extra incentives for energy efficient construction. Because what if we have another pandemic down the road and then they decide, oh, all these shipping delays, we've got to have another school now, but we can't build it because we don't have the funds, because the government won't give us the money because we are not incentivizing if there's no construction materials available. So I think that it's more important that we scratch these things out, that we can decide locally. Other schools can decide locally, but we are not taking, you know, funds out of our administration just because we can't fulfill the obligations of the incentives.
I can't go to, I personally can't go to the public and ask to build a school and tell them it's not going to be energy efficient.
But that's our decision.
By, by law, it has to be energy efficient anyway. Regardless that we get additional funding.
No, 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 wait. You say by law it has to be, tell me, what, what law are we talking about?
So energy efficient means that the, the heating and air conditioning have to be pre-owned a certain, certain way. You have to, um, obviously LED lighting, which we've already incorporated into most of our schools. These are all energy efficient items. Our schools have to be that regardless of what they're lobbying for. So we're not asking for more for specifics. That's what they're asking for in the energy efficiency. It has to be done anyway. But we don't need that line there.
I don't know how to explain all, when we built that middle school up there, we, you get points for everything you do, like the lighting. You get points for just putting, uh, uh, a bike rack out in front of the school. There's a bike rack out, and nobody ever rode a bike to that school, but we put it out there because we got points for it. And we did that through the whole construction. Anything that you get, you can get points for that we could afford to do, we did, uh, to make that school more energy efficient.
You just made my argument a point. I said, we have to.
No, you, no, we didn't have to. We did it to convince the public that this was worth doing. No, there was no law that says you have to put LED lights in there, your school, there was not.
I will disagree.
I just think that we shouldn't be allowing V SBA to lobby on our behalf to give one school system extra funding because they can afford to put solar panels on their roofs when another school system cannot. The whole state needs to raise the bar, and I think the whole state should be given equal funding based on, um, you know, per pupil. Each student should, should be provided similar opportunities. So that, I mean, that's just why I vote no. So on these two changes, I would say no, whatever the board comes to a consensus to is what it does. But as of right now, this, I'm pretty strong about no for both of those, because I can see where it's going down the line. And I think that wraps up all my comments for the additions and modifications of the legislative positions.
I'm writing. That being said.
Okay, well, are we waiting for Mr. Jones on number five also?
Yes. All right, now, this, uh, board member, board challengers.
All right, so looking ahead to November, our next board meeting will be on the seventh, and I will update that agenda accordingly. Uh, the eighth will be a teacher work day, a, um, a secret learning day for students. And the annual chamber banquet is on the twelfth. And the V SBA conference is the sixteenth through eighteenth. Thanksgiving break is the twenty-third through twenty-fifth, and our work session will be on the twentieth. And then for December, our meeting is scheduled for the fifth. There is a Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School meeting in December. Our work, last work session for the year will be on the nineteenth with winter break, the twenty-first through thirtieth. And then as far as the agenda for the seventh, I will just update that. I believe we voted on everything except for the positions, so. And we can come to a consensus on the seventh.
All right, thank you.
Good luck, Chair. Um, the next has our meeting is on November twenty-first at three fifteen.
So you want to add a report to that?
Yes, and I actually have, uh, we also met last week as well.
Okay.
All right, so now, closed session, certification.
Pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia; Resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees; and discussion of pupil personnel as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A two for early admission, waiver, compulsory attendance, county, or district requests, and student discipline.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, and closed session.